June 2nd, City Council Meeting. This is a special meeting of a study session. Madam City Clerk, can you please conduct the roll call?
Councilmember Chow?
Yeah.
Councilmember Sinks?
Here.
Councilmember Willie? Vice Mayor Paul? And Mayor Sharp. I do not see-
Here. I just saw, I just saw Councilperson Willie sign on.
There it is, okay.
I do not see the Vice Mayor. But we have a quorum, so let's get started. Item one, the only item on the study session on the agenda is study session on the Capital Improvement Program, CIP, a review of funded fiscal year 1920 projects recommended to defer one year and projects proposed for fiscal year 2021. And we will receive the report now. We have the staff report.
You sure can. Ted, if you could pull up the presentation, I'd appreciate that. And as he does that, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Roger Lee, your Director of Public Works, and I am pleased to introduce this study session on our Capital Improvement Program. Public Works staff that we will be presenting include Michael Zimmerman. Michael is our Capital Improvement Projects Manager, David Stillman, Transportation Manager, and Gail Seeds, Park Restoration and Improvement Manager. And to conserve time for the study session, I ask that you hold your questions until the end of the presentation, please. Next slide. Oh, no, you're good. Thank you, Ted. The agenda for this study session is to first review the nine capital improvement projects that are proposed for fiscal year 2021, and then to review four capital improvement projects that are recommended for a one-year deferral. Many of the projects recommended for deferral will continue to advance in some aspect, but as a whole, significant expenditures such as the construction of permanent improvements will be delayed. In the next slide, how current projects have been prioritized, as well as how projects for next year have been prioritized, given the uncertainties caused by the COVID-19 will be covered, and Michael, Gail, and David will talk about project specifics. I'm still on the previous slide, Ted, thank you. And then, as the financial uncertainty that has been caused by COVID-19 has been a significant influence on why some projects are being recommended for funding and others for deferral, the presentation will conclude with a review of the Capital Project Reserve Fund. As a footnote, I am pleased to report that 30 of our CIP projects are tracking towards completion, and a schedule for these projects were included in the Agenda Packet as Attachment B. Most projects continue to progress well despite the shelter-in-place order. However, some have been delayed due to challenges of conducting public outreach. A highlight of projects continuing include the library expansion project, sports center seismic upgrade project, McCollum Ranch Community Gardens, Rigdon Creek Trail, McCollum Separated Bike Way project, all projects that are being funded by Apple. And those are just a few. It's not a comprehensive list. We have 30 that are moving forward. So, in this, in the slide that Ted has up now, we have the proposed projects for next year and how they were prioritized. Several inputs are considered when projects are proposed, and they are listed here. I wasn't going to read all of those, but just so the council understands, we've gone through this exercise in years past and how our projects have been prioritized. So, in the next series of slides, the Public Works team will present the project proposed for next year. And so with that, Michael, I'll let you take away this next slide. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Michael Zimmerman, CIP Manager. There are nine new projects that we're proposing for fiscal year 2021 for a total amount of $1,559,500. Of that amount, $567,000 is from external funding, which brings our city-funded total to just under $1 million. Next slide. This is the first proposed project. This is a, several of the playgrounds in the city are over 18 years old, with the playground at Creekside over 22 years old. The equipment is worn and dated. This program allows for the replacement of the equipment on an annual replacement schedule, starting with the oldest part to the newest. The process we envision is to conduct a community outreach program to determine the age group we are designing for, equipment preferences, colors, and desired amenities. Staff will then look for cost-effective, unique equipment that meets those preferences. The goal is to refresh the older playground with new, exciting playground equipment that makes each playground slightly unique. Next slide, please. This is the Blackberry Farm Golf Course Alternatives Analysis. This is envisioned to be a high-level overview of the golf course and Blue Fessin operations. This study would build on the December 2015 report and recommendations made by the National Golf Foundation. The outcome of the study will help determine the level of investment required for this facility. We would start with an outreach effort to determine which alternatives to study, and we would then conduct an economic analysis and report out to council. The results of this study would then provide input to the Stevens Creek Corridor Master Plan. Next slide, please. This is the Park amenity improvements citywide program. With the completion of the Parks and Rec Master Plan, staff now will conduct individual park strategic plans to determine the best way to incorporate what they heard during the process. This planning process takes times and will require a lot of effort and a lot of input from the public. This project provides a funding mechanism to address feedback we received during the master plan process to construct or install minor park amenities that will enhance the recreational opportunities and address community needs quickly and cost-effectively. These are low-cost solutions that can be moved and reused after the park strategic plans are completed and redesigned as envisioned. Slide. Stevens Creek Boulevard Class 4 Bike Way Phase 2 Design. Stevens Creek Boulevard Class 4 Bike Way project is the highest-ranked project in the 2016 Bicycle Transportation Plan. The Phase 2 project extends from Highway 85 east to Wolf Road, where it will connect to the Phase 1 project. The Phase 1 project extends from Wolf Road to east of Tantow Avenue and will be constructed this fall. This project includes signal modifications to include bicycle detection and a concrete island to protect the bicycle lane from vehicles. This is exactly, sorry, the city completed a feasibility study and authorized funds for the Uniper Serra Trail, and it better positioned that project for construction funding, and that's what we're attempting to do with this project. We'd like to advance the design, and it will be sort of shovel-ready and more competitive when grant opportunities arise. Should be noted that staff intends to utilize a portion of our $1 million annual Measure B local streets and roads non-competitive funding allocation to fund the design of this project. So the net cost to the city would be zero. Next project, please. The Traffic Calming Project is a proposed annually program that would create, that will allow citizens to request traffic calming or safety improvements in residential areas. The public are eyes and ears in the community, and they are a valuable asset in identifying necessary traffic safety improvements. Is envisioned that this program, the city would receive a request from the community. They would then give that group a petition, and if successful, the group would then go back and obtain signatures. And if they were able to get over two-thirds majority of the neighbors to agree to those improvements, the city would then conduct further traffic studies and further evaluate the request. If the proposed improvement meets the requirements and has neighborhood support, the project would allow the city to design and construct those improvements in a timely manner. Next project. Cordova Road Retaining Wall. This is, this is an existing retaining wall along Cordova Road that retains soil adjacent to private property. The existing retaining wall is showing signs of potential premature failure. This project would replace the wood planks, the lagging that you see there, in the wall and extend the useful life of the wall. This project was previously funded, however, no structural engineer would design this project using I-beans. We have very little information on the, how this wall was constructed originally, and so they did not take on the liability for the design. So this project would fund the material costs, the wood lagging, the replacement would be done by city crews. Next slide, please. This is the Quinlan Community Center Emergency Generator. Quinlan Community Center is the city's primary mass care and shelter facility and is a designated cooling center. It is also within the public safety power shut-off impact area. Currently, if primary power is interrupted, there is no standby generator. A PSPS event, there would also be no emergency power. Currently, the facility relies on a generator for emergency power, but it is undersized and would take time to obtain and connect in case of service eruptions. This project would provide an efficient, reliable, instantaneous emergency power. It includes a generator sizing study, analysis, distributed energy resources, the generator itself, and transfer switch and all connections. I do want to mention this project was also a recipient of $217,000 PG&E PSPS grant, and is also eligible for additional grants as they are identified. So this would reduce the overall city cost to $100,000. Next slide, please. Next project is the Quinlan Community Center HVAC Equipment. The HVAC system at Quinlan is original to the building circa 1990. The temperature does not stay regulated throughout the building, nor does it stay regulated day-to-day. Public Works has looked at the unit and the temperatures over O-L. Building temperatures are either too cool or too warm, with a single-conditioned space, and it is not efficient. This evaluation builds on the citywide building condition assessment, which identified the need for a more in-depth analysis of the existing system operation. Quinlan is the most inefficient facility in city operations from a cooling standpoint, and is a designated cooling center. This is where people go when outside temperatures climb. An energy-efficient, effective cooling system is needed. This evaluation will meet that goal. Next slide, please. Sports Center Facility Needs Analysis. The citywide building condition assessment identified several areas of concern with the Sports Center Facility. Several structural deficiencies which were identified that were deemed high priority and were being addressed this year with the Sports Center Seismic retrofit project. This needs analysis is envisioned to be a holistic view of the building after we complete size makeup. We are looking at additional improvements that have been requested, such as interior improvements, locker room renovation, shower renovation, lobby renovations, repurpose space for additional exercise. And before we implement any of those improvements, we need to identify what all the recommendations are, what's required, the cost and priority of these projects. In the case of the equipment, the cost effect of repairs versus replacement.
Hey, Michael, this is Deb, not to interrupt too much, but just be aware you're having some glitchy, glitchy reception.
Sorry.
Now, your audio is terrible.
Well, it's nothing personal.
Probably facing away from the mic. Okay, next slide, please. Again, this is a summary of the nine projects that we're proposing. Again, just under $1 million in new funding. Okay, next.
One comment before we move on. You know, should we really have those two items? Could you go back to the previous slide? The Stevens Creek Boulevard, you know, that's Measure B funds. So, when we sum it down the column to 1.5, but that $350,000 isn't coming from our city budget, and then the same thing for the Quinlan, the $217,000. So yes, I appreciate that all the numbers are there, but it's kind, you know, total budget would kind of convey coming out of the city budget, but it's not. Or, okay, maybe I'm just off the screen there. City-funded, you're right. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
That's fine, just don't let it happen again.
I had a question, too. Thank you. Is the generator at Quinlan diesel-powered, or what's the energy source?
We haven't determined that quite yet. So we're envisioning diesel originally, but we're also looking at other other options.
Okay, I would be opposed to funding any diesel backup generators at municipal facilities, and note that the city has a possibility of getting a substantial grant from Silicon Valley Clean Energy.
Or, for what kind of generator?
Well, it's not for a diesel generator. It would be for some combination of solar plus battery or something such.
What about fuel cells? Would you oppose fuel cells, like from Bloom Energy, or?
I think that, that might, that would probably be better, but I think we, we ought to be working with Silicon Valley Clean Energy and not just take the default that PG&E would fund the grant for, which I understand to be diesel.
Michael, would you mind if I answered that question?
No, please.
Hi, Mayor and Council, Andre DeRort, Sustainability Manager, just was here for this purpose, to talk a little bit about how sustainability and Public Works is working together on this plan. So, as Rod mentioned, Silicon Valley Clean Energy is releasing some grant funding for member cities to consider low-carbon or no-carbon technologies for energy resiliency. So, if I can just spend one minute to describe that. The details of that grant just came out as this packet went to publication. What it will include is Silicon Valley Clean Energy is going to provide centralized contracting resource planning and technical assistance to Cupertino and other cities in the region. Another component is a direct grant to Cupertino. So the allocation to Cupertino will be $255,000. This grant can be used for energy resilience planning or also capital upgrades. And that allocation is based on our electric load relative to other cities. So staff is watching this very closely. We're just getting details as they're developing the program very quickly in response to COVID and the economic uncertainty. What we do know is that no match is needed to access these funds. So what staff is recommending is that we could utilize this grant to engage engineering services, develop a roadmap for energy resilience projects, and indeed to possibly enhance or complement the existing funds we received from the PG&E PSPS grant to consider low-carbon or no-carbon technologies. So sustainability staff sees this as an opportunity to enhance one or more of these projects here in the CIP list. If we are able to perform engineering work and identify additional capital needs for that purpose, we would likely come to council in Q1 or mid-year for an out-of-cycle request for anything that's needed above and beyond what you see today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Given that, what's staff's intention on this?
Staff's intention would be to explore something like a solar-plus-battery storage system. For Quinlan, it seems like a good, a good example of project since it is, as mentioned, a cooling center and one of our largest gas users today. So the intent would be to explore electrifying that building and complementing whatever resilience technology would help support that as a critical shelter facility.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, I would just, you know, the PSPS, while they're a rare event, they can go on for many days. So I would just be concerned that we have some way of generating electricity for many, you know, on a continuous basis by being able to add some sort of fuel, whether it's fuel cell, diesel, whatever. But I don't think a solar-plus battery would necessarily be acceptable as for a cooling center for a PSPS.
Noted, yeah. And many, many what they call microgrids are some combination of diesel plus renewable energy resources. So that would be a prime example of something we need to study and engineer.
Okay, I mean, I agree with Rob, but of course, we don't, we want to minimize any diesel, but, you know, perhaps sometimes there's no other way to have the emergency generator.
I will just say that I've had an air conditioning system in my home since I moved here in the early 90s. I've never turned it on. I have a whole-house fan and have great insulation, and that's how we handle it here. It just seems to me in this day and age that we ought to be weaning ourselves of fossil fuel sources everywhere we can and set an example in our city buildings.
Fair enough. Okay.
All right, yeah, Michael, let's continue on, and we'll have the questions at the end.
Yeah, and then we'll have public comment as well at the end.
Next slide shows the projects that we are recommending for funding on a multi-year basis. Most of these projects have been funded in previous years. The annual playground replacement, park amenity improvements, and traffic calming projects will be added to this list if you approve them on June 16th, and they will become an ongoing request moving forward. I think it's self-explanatory, but I can go into detail if anybody wishes.
That's fine. No, you don't have to read the slides to us. That's fine.
Next slide. So of the 34 projects we have currently funded in the CIP, as you can see in Attachment B, sport provides the status of these projects for the completion and when completion is anticipated. As a whole, most of the projects have progressed per the schedule despite the impacts of COVID-19. However, some of these projects, including Bub Road, Mary Avenue, Bike Boulevards, McCollum Separated Bike Ways Phase 2, have had their schedules pushed because of the outreach delays. Four of the projects on this slide are recommended for one-year deferral. Deferral of these projects does not mean that work stops. Many of these projects recommended for deferral will continue to advance in some way, shape, or form. However, the significant expenditures such as construction of permanent improvements will be delayed. Should be noted that these projects will defer approximately $4.8 million in expenditures to future years. However, when these projects are reauthorized, additional amount of approximately $400,000 will be required to complete the projects due to estimated cost escalation. In the next slide, we'll discuss these projects recommended for a one-year deferral. Gail, over to you, and next slide, please.
Yes, thank you, and hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I am Gail Seeds. I am the Park Improvement Manager, and I'm here to talk about the next two slides recommended for deferral. One is the all-inclusive play area, which is planned to replace the existing playground in Jollyman Park that's at the south end of the Stelling Road frontage. We have received a county grant towards the project totaling $1.448 million. We have found that the fundraising goal proposed in our budget is ambitious, and the input we've gotten is that it would be wise to adjust it to be more readily achievable and adjust the timeline commensurately. We are working with county staff on adjusting that goal, and we will keep you posted. Next slide, please. The Stevens Creek Corridor Master Plan did come to the council several times in previous years. The last time it came before the council was in April 2016. There was a draft preferred alternative that had been developed, and at that time, the city council members indicated that there were two key considerations. One consideration that was not acted on was identifying the desired future of the golf course. The second item was that there was discussion about the possibility of investing in master plan elements in the Stevens Creek Corridor when it was not known about the citywide goals and needs elsewhere in the city. Those had not been well identified. As a result of that input, the citywide Parks and Recreation System Master Plan was funded and proceeded, and as you know, this council adopted that master plan on February 18th. Now, getting back to the Stevens Creek Corridor Master Plan, we do still need to identify the desired future for the golf course. That was the biggest decision that had not been resolved. And as Michael noted earlier in this presentation, we are proposing a golf course alternatives analysis to be funded. We believe that that would provide the city council with the decision-making information that is needed, including financial information. Next slide. I will turn this over to David Stillman, our Transportation Manager.
Thank you, Gail. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. David Stillman, Transportation Manager. For our Bike Boulevard Phases 1, 2, and 3, as Michael mentioned, we will be continuing to move forward with implementation of the Bike Boulevard projects just in their interim slash temporary stages rather than with full concrete civil improvements. We've already completed Phase 1 in that respect, which are the Portal and Merritt Bike Boulevards. We installed speed tables and pop-up boulevards at several of the intersections. We'll be moving forward with Phase 2 pop-out boulevards within the next several months as we come out of the COVID shelter-in-place restrictions. And similarly, we'll be moving forward with public outreach meetings for Phase 3 in the next several months in order to get consensus from the neighborhood on improvements for those areas. The boulevards will be constructed with pop-up delineators, as we've done on Merritt and Portal recently, and then we will return to council in subsequent years for permanent improvement funding. Thank you.
There's a, you know, the next slide.
And here is an example of what we have constructed. This is Portal Avenue. That shows one of the speed bumps that we recently installed, or speed table rather, to be more accurate, and then the pop-up boulevard at the intersection of Portal and Amherst. These are also similar improvements, by the way, that we would be constructing as part of the traffic calming program that we've proposed for the next fiscal year.
All right, thank you, David. You know, Michael. Next slide.
So in fiscal year 1920, the city completed the Burn Avenue sidewalk project, which provides for a reasonable north-south path of travel within the neighborhood. The Orange Sidewalk project requires extensive right-of-way donations from 11 properties. The acquisition has been delayed due to the COVID-19 shelter-in-place, or staff will run the outreach necessary for these acquisitions, but will complete the design in 2021. Next slide. This is an example of the completed sidewalk improvements along Burn Avenue. This concludes our presentation of the proposed projects and those recommended for deferral. We will now conclude the presentation with the expected COVID-19 financial impacts and the capital reserve funds, and lastly, the next steps. Over to you, Roger. Next slide, please.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Michael, Ted.
Yeah, please go through these quickly. We have a lot of people wanting to speak.
Yeah, we're wrapping up here, Mayor. So as outlined in the staff report, the Capital Reserve Fund has received significant contributions from the General Fund over the last several years. With the recent event of COVID-19 and the need for the city to be conservative with all funds, council approved, the last council meeting, the transfer of $10 million from the Capital Reserve Fund back to the General Fund. This transfer is in addition to the likelihood that there will be no future transfers from the General Fund to the Capital Reserves for the next five years. The Capital Reserve Fund balance after the transfers from the Capital Reserves to the General Fund will be $3.68 million. The Capital Reserve Fund balance after the transfers from the Capital Reserves to the General Fund will be 3.68 million. New projects proposed will reduce this amount to 1.56 million with an ending Capital Reserve Fund balance of 2.12 million. This would be the amount available for fiscal year 2022 projects and/or emergency projects that could occur without impacting the General Fund. Next slide. For those who are interested in how to access financial information on our CIP, these are active links in the presentation, and so they could be downloaded. Also, just a CIP dashboard of our projects as well. Next slide. For next steps. Okay. So your questions and comments on the projects proposed to defer and new projects is much appreciated. The staff has already received direction on the currently funded CIP. A review of these projects is not part of the study session. As mentioned prior, please refer to Attachment B for the current status of funded projects. With council input, a list of new CIP projects will be going to the Planning Commission for the determination of general plan conformance on on June 15th, which is just prior to us returning back to council on June 16th with a proposed CIP budget. So with that, Mayor, our presentation is over.
Okay, great. So before we bring it back to council, we'll take public comment, and then whatever time is remaining, we'll divide that among the five council members equally. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand. The first person I have with a hand raised is Mooney. Welcome, Mooney. I'll keep on muting you. Okay.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you. You have three minutes.
Okay, yeah, I may not need three minutes, so.
Okay.
If you hear noise, you know, I'm biking, I'm near Stanford on hotel. So just I just wanted to speak as a resident, right? So suddenly, I want the council to exercise utmost restraint when it comes to spending. Even if they are approved projects, it doesn't mean that, you know, we have to go and spend because we don't know what this economic downturn is going to turn out to be in next year, the year after, the next five, 10 years, right? So we've got to be extremely careful in what we spend on. So there's going to be situations where we may need funds to address some emergency situations. And I heard, you know, the previous presenter say, you know, we are not planning to transfer any general funds to capital improvement projects for next five years. So it's very important, you know, we preserve the reserves as much as possible. Only spend, you know, what's needed, absolutely must spend kind of items. The rest, put it on the back burner. We can come back and pick up these projects later on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mooney. Next I have Suzanne Rennie. Welcome. Suzanne. I'm not able to unmute Suzanne for some reason.
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, there you go. Okay, great. Yes.
Okay, okay. So I have more of a question than a statement. There was the Mercury News article about the homeless encampment. This does have to do with the budget, so I'll let you know that. They were talking about removing homeless in the city of Cupertino, and they said, adding another layer of complexity, a ninth U.S. Court of Circuit Appeals ruling in 2018 prohibits cities from penalizing homeless people for sleeping outside in public spaces if there's no other shelter available. And I live along the proposed Regnat Trail, and I've never been concerned of my privacy, but I am concerned about, you know, the changing of our city and would there possibly be homeless encampments back there? And previously, it was said, we had asked, and you had said that we could call the county sheriffs, and they would be responsible for removing the homeless people if I'm remembering correctly. And I'm concerned if we don't have a place to put them, will they be able to remove them? I'm not against the homeless. I'll just say that I want to help them. But is it in our budget to have a place to put them? Because I think in fairness to us as citizens of the city, that should be addressed as part of the financial budget. And I know in other cities, it's been an issue as far as not budget, but as far as not removing them as quickly as people would like them to. I'm hoping in Cupertino that won't be the case, but I am concerned if this penalization means we cannot remove them, is Cupertino going to do something to build a place to house them? I think that should be addressed.
Okay, thank you. Next, Lisa Warren.
Okay, thank you. I just want to point out, in your previous meeting, the speaker specifically mentioned and highlighted regarding that the projects the city has in the works or new ones being hoped for, including any pet projects, I'll call them, need to be looked at as just as coming back to normal, the essential and non-essential. My fears are not necessarily in this presentation tonight, that it may be easy to lose track of that. I just want to bring it up again to repeat what was said last week by somebody else, because I was thinking it at the same time also. And I have one other question related to this. I want to make sure, or I want to ask, what's being done to protect the approximately $8 million for the Lawrence Mini site? Since that is on hold, and there have been people in the past or groups in the past that have wanted to do a money grab and take that away for something else. I just want to know if there's any real protection in place for that money. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Next, we go to Ilango Ganga. Welcome. Ilango, do you wish to speak?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay, thank you. So this is Ilango Ganga. I'm speaking as a resident on behalf of myself. I just want to point out a few things. One is I see that now, you know, the Bike Boulevard project is being, you know, pushed out. You know, they call it as a permanent improvement and temporary. Temporary actually increases the cost of it. The reality is actually you're deferring the project. So Bike Boulevard project is one of the top priority project that helps makes the roads leading to the schools safer for children to bike and walk to school by adding features like slowing the speed of automobiles, improving the intersections, and so on. For some reason or other, the city has not prioritized this project for implementation or construction. You know, and it has been stalled since the project has been approved and funded since 2017. If the criteria set forth in 2016 bike plan is to be followed, this project should have been taken up first before venturing it to other lower priority projects that do not offer such widespread safety benefits to miles and miles of streets across the city. Moreover, Bike Boulevard projects can be integrated with a green stormwater infrastructure that helps environment and sustainability as well. Cities like Berkeley, Palo Alto have implemented this, and also some of the cities are in the process of implementing Bike Boulevards to enhance neighborhood safety. I, you know, I hope the city council prioritizes this project over other CIP projects during the session. One of the main safety problems for the bicycle and pedestrian safety, per data, right, this is in the bicycle and pedestrian master plans, is major corridors and road crossings. Instead, what's been happening in the city is prioritizing, you know, projects that are, you know, not necessarily, these are unpaved paths next to residential streets where there are already pedestrian sidewalks, and city is going and prioritizing those things for because of other reasons. Such unpaved paths cannot even be designated as bicycle facilities, and this is being disguised. It can't be designated as Class One, Two, Three, or Four, and these are not safer for biking. And, you know, pedestrians are put on the same unpaid paths. It's primarily meant for recreational purposes, and the city staff is not bringing forward, you know, those issues. Moreover, it is not consistent with the goal set out in the master plan as well. So because of these other top priority projects such as Stevens Creek Boulevard, you know, Bike Boulevards and other, you know, top priority projects on the major corridors are being diverted. Funds are being diverted for these unpaid parts. So during this severe budget shortfall due to COVID-19, no additional funds are being projected and to be added for the next five years. Only 2 million is being kept for emergency purposes. So I request the council and the city to be fiscally responsible and take a real look at all the funded capital projects with unspent funds and defer all programs that are absolutely not critical and only advanced programs that have broader citywide impact for the community that are absolutely essential. This is what cities like Campbell are doing during these uncertain times. And one last observation I want to make based on the staff report. You know, during the traffic calming project, the staff mentioned that, you know, in order to progress with that project, two-thirds of the local residents needs to be approving that project or supporting the project.
Finish up.
I'm done. I'm done. Just thirty seconds. Yeah. So because of that, I'm just telling you that some of the projects, these unpaid projects, not even a single resident has been supporting, and then you're, you know, steamrolling the projects. Why? These residents don't matter to you or what?
Well, fortunately, that's not true, but let's move on. Ji-Hong Yi, welcome. Welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you. You have three minutes.
Okay. I'm speaking today as a resident to urge the Cupertino City Council to allocate additional budget and direct the city to provide the necessary mitigations for noise, loss of privacy, and security issues for the impacted residents due to Regnat Creek Trail, especially for those abusing the trail. Protecting the citizens is the duty of the city and the council. During the last city council meeting, I requested the MND to be disapproved because the noise and the loss of privacy is too much for those on Amar Drive. I shared my experience that I was able to hear the discussion of the passerby from my room. Conversely, this also concerns me because then that means a passerby can hear what we speak in our rooms as well. The city council acknowledged that it was very possible, yet the council still approved the MND. Some of you said that you have to balance the need and wants of every citizen, even though that means there's some nuisance and loss of privacy is obvious for us. I understand the decision that the council has to make for the want of majority. Now the decision is made for the majority who want the trail. I think it is the time for the council to hear and take on action for the people who would get directly impacted by the decision. I think providing the additional mitigation is the only way to balance as you want. I bought my house 12 years ago, partly because of the location. The location facing towards the park without any neighbor behind of my backyard appeared to me that would provide better privacy without any public access. And I paid for it, millions of dollars. Now it's going to be taken away by the city's decision. I think it is only fair for the city to provide as much mitigations as possible for what I'm going to lose that I paid for. And also, please allocate additional budget for nightly gate closures. Homeless encampment and the consequences are of big concern to us. The naive argument by the city staffs that homeless would not come to encamp on open space has been proven to be wrong. The city so far has failed to relocate the homeless on Wolf Road near the 280 entrance out of the city. Mercury News recently wrote an article about that. The best strategy for this kind of problem is always a prevention. We need to close the gates every night and enforce everyone's belief before the gates are closed. In summary, I urge the city council to allocate additional budget and direct the city to provide the necessary mitigations. Or postpone the construction until the city can secure enough budget if the fiscal crisis due to COVID-19 and lack of budget are the reasons of not providing the necessary mitigations. Thank you.
You're muted, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome, Benifer. Allowed to talk? Okay.
Okay, yeah. Good evening, everyone. Today, the council is going to look at 52 million worth of public works projects in the CIP study session. It would be meaningful for the council members to seek breakup for projects, especially since the amount to millions of taxpayer dollars. A good example or a breakup would be ask the staff, construction and contingencies, consultant costs before the project is even show already, mitigation for residents impacted by a city project as directed by the general plan. This kind of transparency would help the council to know how much money is going out to consultants and outside entities for one single project even before the bid for construction is sent out. And that would make you know what is the ratio of consultants and outside entities getting the taxpayer dollars to a project cost. For example, coming to Regnat Creek Trail, the total cost of the project is estimated at 3.63 million. Here is the breakup. The construction cost is 1.88 million. Yes, it excludes a lot of hidden costs, which you'll come to know. Consultants gets 813,000, which is 27% of the project, and this consultant is only feasibility and design consultant, not a construction bid guy. Residents get 365,000, which is 12%, 84 homes get 12% for the mitigation. This is a city project that has direct impact on the privacy and security of the residents. It's just not about the residents seeking protection. The general plan of the city directs the city to prioritize the privacy and security of the residents, especially while developing a project. So if you think that our city is an essential project and you need to do it this year, fine. But we need you to step up on behalf of the residents and do it right for them, whose homes will be within 1.5 feet of the poorly designed eight-feet narrow path abutting their homes. You can do that and affirm your fairness to the residents who are not backed by powerful organized advocacy groups. Show them the same passion you showed while passing the trail, regardless of whatever facts were presented to you. Direct the staff to reach out to the residents, survey what they need. For some, it could be a cement wall is the only option to protect their homes. For others, whose homes are not directly on the creek, it would be taller wooden fences. Direct the staff to bring three different estimates for these needs or work with the residents to get an affordable quote. Direct the staff to work with the six homes of Lozana to find a solution to their unique issue of privacy and security. They are still waiting. Nothing has been done for them, though you allocated 40,000 for them. So finally, allocate more money to the residents. The question is not about the money, because this would be a few more hundred thousand dollars. But the question is, I'm sure this will be like a drop in the bucket.
Finish up because you're way over time.
I'm finishing off, yes. This will be a drop in the bucket against the 52 million. The question is whether as our elected officer or officials, you are ready to protect your constituents. Do you care enough? Much rest on that answer. Thank you.
Okay, next. Nirdas. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Nirmalindu Dash. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. My name is Nirmalindu Dash, and I'm a Cupertino resident for 15 years, very proud to be Cupertino resident. And thank you for the opportunity to speak here. My question is not related to today's meeting agenda. In the nationwide right now, you know, this protest is going on for the death of George Floyd and the injustice to the people of no color from the police department primarily. My question is, as a city, what we are doing? What is our position? My first question in this.
Okay, excuse me, but this is not the agenda item we're discussing, and you're welcome to come back during the city council meeting for oral communications, where it would be appropriate to ask this, and I will also have a statement that I prepared on the incident that occurred. So if you wouldn't mind coming back at 6:45 or so to make this statement. Okay, thank you. Next, I have Sana Chernov. Welcome. I'm still trying to unmute you. Sana, are you there? You may have to unmute as well. I'm sorry. Yeah, it's Sana Chernov. I'm trying to unmute you, but you may need to unmute as well. I cannot. I cannot unmute. I cannot. I cannot unmute. Sana.
Mayor, this is Bill. I tried to unmute as well. Again, it's a two-step process. You unmute and then the participant would have to unmute on their side.
Right. So Sana, if you wish to speak, you're gonna have to unmute yourself. Otherwise, we will move on. Okay, so seeing no one else that wishes to speak.
Mayor, I have, I do have an email comment from a resident.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Okay, this is from Siraj. As a resident of Lamar, our concerns regarding noise and security have been addressed, have not been addressed. With the high level of traffic expected on the trail, this is not some noise that we would hear only for one to two seconds as claimed in the past meeting. It will be a continuous one and pretty high during school hours. A wooden fence where we will be two feet from the trail does not solve any noise and security issues. There were graffiti issues most recently at Calabasas Park. Can the city council please allocate extra funds so that the resident concerns are addressed? Thanks, Siraj. And that is all for emails, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. Um, the Sana, if Sana is still here, does he or she wish to try again? Sana, are you there? Okay, I don't. See, what, so we will close the public comment now. Uh, wait, oh, there's Sana again. Let me try again. Sana, are you there? Okay, well, we'll bring it, close public comment, bring it back to council. We have, let's see, we've got twenty-three minutes, so that is about four minutes, four and a half minutes per council member. Who would like to go first? I will time it. Rod. Whoops. Okay, go.
Okay.
I will time you for four minutes. Okay.
You know, if if I know that our Public Works Department has been working in good faith with residents who responded and some of them haven't frankly. But you know, if if we need a little more money to to accommodate residents that hadn't gotten their input in earlier for Reggna Creek Trail, I would be up for allocating that in this new budget cycle. I don't need to have a big discussion about the whole project. I think it needs to move forward, but if, you know, another two hundred thousand dollars would provide material help to to the satisfaction of those that are now coming forward who didn't earlier, I would be up for that. Um, the other thing I would say is, you know, we have a lot of expensive needs in the city. I'm glad we're finally getting to the golf course. I'm glad we're finally getting to a discussion about Blue Pheasant and what to do about it. But I would like to to add one more thing in that area to this mix. If we're not going to get the master plan done this year, I would like to have us address the utilization of the swimming pool to make it possible for us to offer swim lessons there and for it to be open more than a hundred days a year to finish the work we started when we bought the Seaford property and make access to vehicles, pedestrians, bicycles safer. And to include school buses in that. I think it's time for us to get on with this work. It's a, it's an expensive resource. As we've discussed before, we've invested some thirty million dollars in this corridor, and I would like to see us have the facility better utilized. It's certainly cheaper than doing anything anywhere else. So those are my remarks, and hopefully you, I'll yield back my time.
Thank you. I agree with both of the things you said and yeah, I understand the difficulty we're having in getting the pool and Blackberry Farm open year round, but that is definitely something we should be working on more diligently. And the Seaford property, we purchased it at least two years ago. It's time to get moving on that. So, yeah, I agree with both of those. And we will bring it next to Leon.
Thank you, Mayor.
Leon, you have four minutes.
Okay. Um, this is not the way to do study session. And so I think there is a I thank staff for bringing forward the four project that they plan to delay. However, there is no visibility to the actual funding we would be spending this year or any future years for the remaining thirty projects in the, in this agenda packet. You know, if we are asking the council to make decision, we need all that information. So I would like to know what would be the total expenditure of the, all the thirty-four projects for next year, for the second year, for the third year, and O R C now, right now is fifty-six million for the total. But there are multiple years. And some of them are studies that will actually have huge capital spending like from golf course, memorial park, swimming pool, sports center, all of these. So we keep studying things. How do we know we will actually have funding to fund them? If we don't have that picture, why do we spend dollars to study them? And then in terms of the priority, again, the staff made a list of priorities but didn't tell us how they prioritize the project. I have concern that the highest priority is council priority. I don't think we ever made a ranking of the projects. So the council priority is what? The perception of staff of council pet projects? I'm using the term someone else used. So are we putting pet projects higher priority, which is why Bike Boulevard, a project that has been funded for many years and kept getting delayed? And this is a project that actually provides traffic coming for major, a lot of areas in Cupertino that's close to schools. And the previous plan that it was on the website, it was removed. It was targeted to finish implementation by the summer of two thousand nineteen. Implementation. And now we are saying we would delay this physical, all the spending on this project, but we are not delaying all the spending on the other projects. I fail to see how you prioritize anything more than safety and on the project that impact a lot, a lot of Cupertino residents. So I would like to see the ranking from staff that decide how we, how you are ranking the projects. And then I have concern with the when we have annual funding, for example, we now have a annual funding of two hundred fifty thousand dollars for safe route to school features five years. Once we have that, it seems then we have no visibility what's actually getting done every year. So I have concern if we have two hundred thousand for park amenities, who are going to decide which park gets the priority? And that will need a lot of outreach too. So outreach has been used as reasons to delay some other projects. How come we are proposing new project that needs more outreach?
They have twenty seconds. Okay.
And and so for the traffic calming majors for for bike, for that also actually implementing exactly the same thing that Bike Boulevard would have provided, the speed tables, raceway, crosswalks, bob out, but now it will be on demand, unplanned and and it's, it seems we are prioritizing pet projects. People, whoever shout the loudest gets the highest priority. Is that how we are doing things in Cupertino? I really have a concern. We are going to have two million dollars only left in our reserve. When the state is cutting twenty percent of state is cutting salaries, cutting, other people are cutting staff, Cupertino is going on business as usual. I'm very concerned our mindset. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, next, Darcy, would you like to go?
I'm gonna save my time over for this round of comments to other council members who want to speak. If there's extra time and you're at reality.
Okay, um, John, do you want to go? Do you want me to go first or what?
Either way, you can take your pick.
Okay, I'll go. Um, I have the, two of the concerns I had were the cost of studies for Quinlan and for the Sports Center. I mean, the fifty-nine thousand and twenty-five thousand are not to actually do the improvements or buy the generator. I'm just, I question why it costs fifty-nine thousand to study the ventilation and the airflow at Quinlan Center. The Sports Center, again, twenty-five thousand to study it seems excessive to me. For the other items that were discussed, yeah, I'm satisfied with the, what's deferred and what what's going forward. I mean, I think we really need to listen to the residents and work on the projects that will most benefit them, especially considering the COVID-19 pandemic and the need for more recreation. And I heard what Rod said regarding the more mitigation, and I did talk to Roger before, just before this meeting regarding what could be done in terms of noise reduction along the trail when the replacement barrier, whatever it is, is put in. And there are some ideas that we could we could do that would add to the cost, but not not excessively and that would greatly reduce the noise that would be able to be heard from people walking or bicycling along there and, you know, from the noise from the adjacent park. And I would point out, I know one resident said that they purchased their house and, you know, they thought that apparently that the water district land would never be used, even though it has been used in the past and has been opened in the past. So hopefully, you know, everyone's aware when they purchase something that backs up to public lands that there's no guarantee that the public lands will be unused forever. I know it upset a lot of people in Saratoga when the water district told them that they could no longer use the water district land. People had built permanent structures, hot tubs on the water district land and had to remove it. So, yeah, that's all I have to say on this. Uh, but thank you for staff. I think you're doing the best you can in a difficult time. So I'll turn it over to John next.
Okay. So I'm trying to understand things as best I can. And so we have Attachment B, which lists the thirty-four projects. And so that's great. Then we have Attachment A, that is the four projects that are recommended for deferment. And then we have Attachment C, which is the new proposed project. I I'd really like to suggest that, you know, in order for the the community to help us decide what is the higher priority versus what's not. Is the all-inclusive playground of more importance than something else? And what I'm asking is that, you know, I'm glad this is a study session tonight so that hopefully I can request that when it does come back to us. You know, Attachment B has the thirty-four projects on it. I'd sure like to see the some, you know, the individual amounts for each of the thirty-four projects on a year-by-year basis. If that's available to the residents, I think they would be more able to determine what should be deferred over something else and keeping the ones that are the highest priority. Without it, you know, without it being done like that, I I just don't feel that the residents feel that they can help us decide what the more important ones are. So that's really my number one issue. And I do think staff has done a lot of work to organize their their things. Attachment A, Attachment B, Attachment C. But that missing dollar amount on Attachment B for all the projects, without that, I I truly feel that we have, we, meaning us on the council and the residents, really don't have a good way to determine what should be substituted for what. I definitely agree that everybody's gonna have a different scale, a different ranking. But we're here to represent the majority and the ones that are gonna get used the most for the community. So that, I I'd really ask that when this comes back to us, please break it down. I think Councilman Chow said the same thing, that we we need those dollar amounts on a per-year basis so that we can look. I realize that there there will be ramifications when we look at one year in isolation and say, well, if we were to defund it, it does have a domino effect. But still, it gives us an ability to kind of compare similar apples, red apples and green apples, and and try and determine what makes the most sense for the community for the CIP budget. Then the the one thing, you know, we we hear from the residents about different projects, impacts to them, and I think we have to take that very seriously. I'd I'd really like to have, you know, staff keep a record of all the resident issues with the issue and their response to the issue. I mean, when the residents are coming to us tonight and talking about the noise impacts and potential homeless for which they can't be removed, I'd really, you know, it's interesting, we hear it from the from the residents and then there's no answer. You know, okay, we're not allowed to communicate during oral communication. But the the issues are known, they've been voiced, they need to be recorded. In my view, they need to be recorded in. And then what is staff's response? And if it takes a week or a month or even two months, but to show us that the issues on a per-resident basis were in fact addressed. And I really don't want to see any residents fall through the cracks.
Okay, finish up, John.
Such that their fence didn't get addressed and they fell through the cracks. Let's hope they don't fall through the cracks. But if if staff would keep that running list of issues, when it was voiced, who voiced it, what was staff's response to the residents? And then we can say, okay, everything got addressed, nothing goes through the cracks. That's my request.
Okay. Deb, Deb, do, no, hold on. Wait, yeah, wait, I wanna ask Deb, because it's my understanding that we do address every issue and we've done a huge amount of outreach. We have answered the questions regarding the homeless situation, including the problem we see over behind Lawrence Midi when the fence is not open.
The CIP expenditures.
So Deb, Deb, can you answer John's question about do we keep track of?
We do. We have, we have like a, well, we have our, all of our emails back and forth with the folks along the trail that would engage with us. And we also, I believe we also have a matrix where we're keeping track of it. So David Stillman or Roger can correct me if I'm wrong, but I've seen it myself. We're keeping track of all of those things. And he has a list of all, what is it, eighty-four homes along the the creek there, David. He's keeping track.
Yes, so, yeah, so we we sent out letters a couple months ago to everybody that lived along the trail explaining, explaining the project and and informing them that we'd like to work with them to address their privacy and security concerns. And we heard back from a good number of them. We are keeping track of all of those in a spreadsheet along with, you know, what they would like and our responses to them. And then to keep, to keep things from falling through the cracks, just just today, actually, we sent out another mailing to the same eighty-four residents. Kind of say, this is, you know, your second, we emailed, we we sent you a letter a couple months ago. We're sending you a reminder letter in case you you didn't see or didn't respond to the first. We would very much like to work with you. Please get in touch with us as soon as possible so we can help to address your concerns. And we will keep track of all of those responses as they come in as well.
Can you make that spreadsheet available to us or so that when we so that when we do engage residents, I mean, if I hear from somebody like we've heard tonight, I might get on the phone and call them. If I had your spreadsheet and if that line was blank, I'd say, yeah, I think I will give them a call. If that line says that this is the issue they raised, this was the answer that we gave them, then I would say, well, um, I'm not sure about the disconnect, but the question was raised and there seems to be a sufficient answer. Can you make that spreadsheet available to us?
Uh,
Is it, is it confidential? I don't know.
I think it'd be better as, as you do get inquiries, just, just to get those two, two public work staff and then we will follow up and, um, and include, and include that conversation back to, to you, John, and to let you know that we closed the loop.
Okay, uh, Rod, you had your hand up again. Do you have something else to say?
I can answer my question about the topic that's right on our agenda, which is how much is exactly is the total cost? In case that say, just for the sake of argument, we are delaying all thirty-four projects for next year. What, how much is the total? I want the total amount for annual.
Okay, um, Deb, can you get that for her while Rod, um, had his hand up?
I think Roger might have.
I'm sorry, I had it.
Roger has, oh, you had it up by mistake.
Any additional comment? I'll let my comment stand.
Roger, did you have that number?
I think we have to respect the fact that, uh, some of our residents are make, you know, uh, want their comments to go to staff rather than to, to us. And so, you know, they're welcome to reach out to us too. But I primarily think that staff should be the, the conduit for comments that, you know, um, frankly, um, then w- we can accommodate them with the people that are most knowledgeable. So I'll stand on that.
Okay, Roger, did you have the total for Councilman, Member Chow?
Well, I, I can, I can certainly look into what has gone to council in prior years and, and provide a breakdown by project.
Right, yeah, even though, right.
I'm not talking fire. I'm talking about the next fiscal year, the one we are talking about.
Right, even though we have all that data, it would be nice to have it in a concise form like that.
Thank you for getting that data. No, I, I want to make sure that today at least we talk about priority. How will we prioritize what projects to delay or not? The priority slide the staff has shown, shows the council priority as the first. Citywide, community-wide benefit as the second. Third is health and safety. And fourth is par, uh, master plan or condition assessment. The first priority, I'm not very sure. I think we have never been asked to rank all of the projects. Is, so, is, is there a, a, at all? I think every one of the projects that's in the list have been approved by the council. So what's the priority?
Well, that's, that's correct. But it, it, the, the only point of the, the council priorities is just to acknowledge that you are the final decision-making body of the city and the projects are recommended through you. Um, that, that, that is the intent of that priority being identified.
Then what's the ranking for citywide benefits, health, safety? Is there a ranking for each of the project that we can see?
Well, we, we, we just, we, we acknowledge that those are all important inputs as we decide how to use the, the, the the finite amount of dollars that we have. And Public Works makes our recommendations based on those considerations. And, you know, when we, it, it was similar to what we did with the, uh, the large effort that we did back, uh, July for the bike and pet projects, um, from the, from the different master plans. And we, we just, we just wanna be transparent. What we show in all the things that we think about and what, what's wrong, and that's, that's what drives our recommendations each year.
But then why did you pick these four? And did you pick maybe ten first? And then out of that, pick four? What's the process? Why only that four was presented? Why didn't you present maybe fifteen and let the council pick four?
Yeah, well, we, we, we looked at those projects that could be deferred with the least amount of impact to the community and be, being able to provide you that rationale this evening. That's, that's why you have the list.
And it's not just, it's also the money that we get from outside sources.
But the council is a decision-making body.
Sometimes we might not do the projects in the exact order just because of the funding we may be getting from the county or from other, other entities.
Yes.
You know, Linda Vista Trail, um, you know, uh, you know, there's a
No outside funding.
No, that one doesn't. That's a bad example. But the, uh, what was the one, Roger, where we're getting the money from the Measure B?
That was Stevens Creek Boulevard.
Yeah.
Yeah. So my point is, the council is decision-maker. So I wish the staff presented the council options, not just one option. If we, we could have fifteen or, uh, fifteen, a ranking of the final fifteen you picked. And then what's the dollar amount for that fifteen? And then we can decide on that. But now we don't have any information except the four.
All, all, all the projects have been previously authorized and, and were
Right.
And we're given our direction to do it.
Right. I mean, I don't know how many times we have to come back and do the same thing over and over again.
So as a question on the inclusive playground, that one, I don't expect there will be actual expenditure for this year. You still need the expend, need a lot of outreach, planning, talking. So you don't even need to delay that, right?
Because of the fundraising that's required.
Right. Um, so it's, it's, it's six forty-five now. Darcy, did you have anything to add? Uh, we're already over time. Before the regular meeting.
In, in just a question, under the schedule of construction for currently funded projects, R O W, is that, what, what is that? Is that right-of-way or is it something else? Uh, Vice Mayor Paul, did you say R O W? Yes, there's a Yeah, that, that's correct, right-of-way. So it's probably right-of, right-of-way acquisition, for example, for the Orange Sidewalk project. Okay, so wherever says that, that is where we're exclusively focused upon acquiring the ability to implement whatever we're trying to do. Is that? Yes, that's correct. Okay. Okay, yeah, no, I, I, I basically agree with what Councilmember Chow's saying in principle in that we really need to be able to, uh, get a sense for our public in terms of our process of, of prioritization. Um, I don't disagree with staff's choices as, you know, I, I think they do a, a good and professional job. Uh, but I think in future iterations, uh, if we can keep that in mind, I think you're gonna improve the quality of the information that we're sending out there. So that, that's what my comment is on that. As to Rod's comment with regard to a couple hundred thousand dollars for additional fencing, I mean, I, I, you know, tend to support that in principle as well. You know, I, I think it's a, it's a good project. I, I realize that we might have had a difference of opinion in the past and there are some ongoing concerns, but I think part of the idea of, of operating in good faith and moving forward is to have this ongoing conversation. And if needs be, um, you know, I understand that at some point it was really about opposing and not so much about engaging in, in the details. So, so I would support that as well. Thanks very much.
Great. Okay, um, so it's way past six forty-five, so we will adjourn the study session and we'll, um, let's take a five-minute break. We'll start the regular meeting at six fifty-three. Thank you, everybody.